Good afternoon. Before the meeting, we will start with pre-agenda, before the meeting, a non-agenda public testimony. And we have several people, so we'll give you two minutes, which means you'll have the green light for one minute, and when the yellow light comes on, you need to start wrapping up so you can stop before we stop you. Okay, the first three people to call up are Becky Breedlove, Steve Greewald, and Samarta Sandhu.
Becky Breed...hi, am I on? Thanks. Becky Breedlove, my address is on file. When I signed up a week ago to speak, my topic had to do with Title I and some misunderstandings, perhaps, about numbers of students being disenrolled. I received this morning a report that went to board members and Superintendent Koba on the 27th, so I'm going to review that report, and I'll get in touch with Stephen Carr with questions I have, and maybe they'll be answered and clarified for me. But while I'm up here with my two minutes, I also wanted to share a joy. We're very, very excited at Crawford to be offering statistics college course. Mesa College is on our campus. They cap their courses at 35, so we had to turn some of the students away that want to be enrolled in that course, but maybe they'll have an opportunity to take it next term. And another concern that we have has to do with the fact that we were, we received a grant from the Carlson Family Foundation. John Winn received that award, $15,000 to him, $5,000 to the school. And boy, are we having a hard time being able to figure out how we can spend that money according to way the grant was written. I currently am out $2,000 out of pocket right now because we just moved forward and bought some stuff that the grant said we could. So if I don't get that straightened out pretty soon, you'll see me here asking for that. And the other part of the grant was for peer helpers. In our district, last year, there were only three students district-wide that are African-American that passed the B.C. exam. Two of those were from Crawford. There were five Latino students only out of the whole district who passed the B.C. exam. Four of those were from Crawford.
He has to implement new industries here. He has to grow our present industries. He has to use tax advantages to do that. He has to increase the amount of tourism. He has to stop outsourcing of jobs. Come and do rotations to help us out, so we have enough medical, nursing staff, and also for physical education. We have to tell, in no uncertain terms, the governor that he has to increase the GNP, and that would be a sustainable solution for our problem here, to create increased revenues of $1 billion a year for colleges and San Diego Unified School District. Steve Greewald, premier. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we have Chuck Deal, Mary Turnberg, and David Page. And I guess not everybody's here that we had on the list.
My name's David Page. Hi, evening, board members, superintendent. As we talk about charter schools today, I'm hoping that you would look for possibly unintended hypocrisies, that the rules that you put on charter schools you might consider for yourself, whether it's your requirements to have community involvement, whether it's your requirement for five-year plans, whether it's your requirements to close schools fully and restart them up again when they fail to serve the students that they are supposed to be teaching, that you would consider the things you're making the charters do that you wouldn't put on yourself. In either the cases, you care about those students more than your own, or, I'm not sure. I'm not accusing, I'm just asking that you consider those things as you look at the rules for charters. Second of all, please don't sell property. Turn it into something that'll generate long-term income. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Turnberg. My address is on file, and I'd like to read an excerpt by Julianne Thompson. This is something she sent to the newspapers. "We live in the wealthiest country in the world, yet we do not demand of our elected officials and members of our boards of education the justice implied in the proper and necessary funding for all children's educational needs." Martin Luther Jr. stated, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Our current educational funding system is fatally flawed by economic injustice." Where are the super PACs for education? As citizens and parents, we allow billions of dollars to be raised for and spent virtually without controls on aspiring political candidates. There is enough money raised throughout these campaigning periods to provide and enrich every educational program throughout the United States of America. Instead of directing that kind of financial largesse through education, we allow our elected representatives to perpetuate an educational system that is unjust to all students. This economic injustice will create fewer days and hours of instruction, cuts to school programs, fewer teachers, increases in class size, cuts to counseling programs, and a system dividing the rich and poor. These failures in our educational system are pervasive throughout every township, city, and state in this nation, and it's time to stop this. And you have the power to help us do that. Please speak for us when you talk to other people who make these decisions.
Thank you. Okay, to begin our meeting, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call to order our regular charter meeting of February 7, 2012. First of all, a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Okay, please vote. Okay, we have four board members present and all in agreement with adopting the agenda. Okay, first of all, announcements by the superintendent in terms of administrative appointments.
Thank you, President Evans. I have two appointments for this evening. One, Karina Reyes from Vice Principal Golden Hill K-8 to Vice Principal Roosevelt Middle School. Second, Aranola Esther Omagan from Principal Mann Middle School to Senior Principal Lincoln High School.
Okay, we will now proceed with the public hearings for the renewal of charter petitions for several schools here today. And the first one is Health Sciences High and Middle College. Moise Saez, please come forward and present us the information.
Good evening, trustees and superintendent. These are public hearings and are not action items at this point. They're only for information. The purpose of public hearing is, under Education Code, this California Education Code, is to consider the level of support from district teachers and other district employees and parents and guardians. Staff is currently reviewing the petitions. There's, again, there's a number of them up for renewal. They're still being reviewed at this point, and they will return on a later date for board action and consideration to either grant or deny the charter petitions.
Okay. So for the first school, what information do we have for, we have some public speakers. Was there any information that you were going to present, Moise Saez?
The first school, I believe the first on the agenda is Health Sciences High. Just real, again, basic information at this point because it's not up for action, is they currently have a 752 API that reflects a four-point growth over last year, and they did meet their eligibility renewal requirements by being a six on the statewide DESILE rankings and a six on the similar schools ranking.
Okay. Any comments by board members?
Yeah, Mr. President, you would just open the floor for a public hearing, see if there anybody comments for the public.
We don't have any public speaker for this. Does anyone want to speak on this item, the public hearing to consider renewal of the charter petition for Health Sciences High and Middle College? Okay, seeing none?
We'll close the public hearing then.
We'll close the public hearing at this point on this charter. Okay, next, the public hearing to consider renewal charter petition for San Diego Cooperative Charter School.
Again, this is a public hearing. There's no action required at this point. The most recent data we have is that charter school had an API of 795 growth API score, and San Diego Cooperative was a seven in the statewide DESILE rankings and a one in the similar schools rankings, so they are eligible for renewal.
Okay, and so this is the public hearing. We have Wendy Rank Burr, who has requested to speak on this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Koba, and President Evans, and members of the board. I'm Wendy Rank Burr. I'm the president and CEO of San Diego Cooperative Charter School, and I'm proud to present our petition for our second renewal. We are 10 years old, so one of the older charter schools in the world of charter schools, 10 is old. We produce really fabulous graduates who go on to many of the high schools in San Diego Unified and the high school teachers, because that was the area where I worked in when I was with San Diego Unified, report that they're pleased to receive our students. They come in articulate, thinking students who are ready to take on the challenges of high school. We keep track. Our kids always come back to us. We have our, some of our graduates off at college. We have students at Harvard, Yale, UC Santa Cruz, SDSU, Portland State, Reed, Occidental, Mills, and several others. We are a very high-demand school. We receive the largest number of applications for our school ever. We are in excess of 400 applications, and we have only 22 available spots. We have logged over 20,000 volunteer hours from our parents, and just today I had the chance to see a university geologist who has his kids at our school helping my teachers to plan the geology unit with their second and third graders. I know many of you have been out to visit my school. I encourage you to do so. It's a wonderful place to be, and we look forward to serving the needs of San Diego students in our renewal years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Mr. Burr?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Dr. Wendy Rank Burr and Ken Rochelle for your leadership in really taking the school, stabilizing the school, and then taking it to another level. And then especially to Wendy for your leadership in the charter community and working closely with the district and being able to share ideas, share solutions. It's been a pleasure to work with you at both levels.
Thank you. The last time I addressed the board was in November. We were talking about budget issues, and because we prepared for the worst and hoped for the best for us, it worked out a little bit better, and I'm proud to report we are able to give all of our employees a mid-year bonus this year, and so that's pretty exciting for us, so just thought I would share.
Thank you. Okay, that closes the public testimony for the San Diego Cooperative Charter School. We'll now move into the public hearing to consider renewal charter petition for Arroyo Paseo Charter High School.
Again, this is only a public hearing, so no action at this point in time. Currently, in the last reportable year, Arroyo Paseo received an API of 629, which reflected a 23-point increase in their API, so they are eligible for renewal. They do have a statewide DESILE ranking of one, and they did not receive a similar school ranking due to the small sample size of their school. They are eligible for renewal based on the growth in API.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for the public hearing, we have Komak Osman, Halima Haji Hassan, and Matthew Saifu and Brian Thurman. You can all come forward and then speak in any order. Just give your name, please. You have two minutes, so there will be a green light, and after one minute, the yellow light.
President Evans, Superintendent Koba, members of the board, and leader district leadership, my name's Matthew Saifu, and I go to, I live on, I live near 38th Street. I go to Arroyo Paseo Charter High School, and before I went to this school, I went to San Diego Academy in National City, and when I went to that school, it was a pretty big school, and I didn't really get the help that I needed. So when I came to this school, I learned that the teachers actually cared about you and that they would actually help you since this is a smaller charter school, and that they would, that we actually take the time to show you the work, show you the work and how to do it, and all you, all that you have to do is actually apply yourself and pay attention to actually understand. So when I came to this school, I actually did that for, like, did that program for a while, and I started doing better than when I was at my other school. So I really like this school, and I really hope that she would renew the charter.
Thank you. Matthew.
Hello, everyone. This is my mom, and I'm Halima Haji Hassan, and I go to, I have been going to Arroyo Paseo for the past three years. I'm a senior now, and it's been the most beautiful experience, like, from my freshman year until now as a senior. I've seen, like, myself grow and also the school. And like, the way that, the school is a home for me. It's not like just the thing that I just go to and just experience. It's like a home. I feel as if it has traditions, it has morals, it's like, it teaches you what to do. And there's this, like, this, from my freshman year, there's this, until my senior year, there was the annual talent show, and I would always apply to myself and like, understand and really get a feel of home, you know? And then my mom, like, we, it's not just me that's a senior now. I had an older brother graduate in 2010, and an older sister graduate in 2011, and I'm the third generation of Arroyo Paseo graduates. And my mom really cares for the school. She really does. She understands, like, how Mr. Thurman and the rest of the school applies, apply themselves to, at home, you know what I mean? And my mom would like to say some things in line, and I would like to translate. What would you want to say?
Hi, good evening. My name is Kamak Osman. Arroyo Paseo is a charter school. It's a very nice school. I have the four kids over there. Three they graduate, so very nice, in education and everything. They're very nice people, really. And I happy, because my kids, they grow over there, and the education is so nice, and I happy. Last year for Halima, and I have next year, Yusuf, maybe next year he graduate there. What I say, my English is a little bit.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Superintendent Koba, President Evans, and members of the board and district leadership. Appreciate you allowing us to have some time here. I just wanted to come, my name's Brian Thurman. I live at 5738 Del Cerro Boulevard, and I just wanted to touch on a few aspects of Arroyo Paseo that aren't necessarily in the fine print of our charter renewal there, and some are. I just want to emphasize some of those, but just to help you have as much information as possible to assist you to make an informed decision coming up here. First of all, our academics, one of the issues I saw last year at a board meeting here was the issue of D grades and what that means to children as they progress through school. Arroyo Paseo does not offer D grades. Anything less than 70% is an F, so we, our rigor is a little bit stepped up there. It's been that way since the school started. It will be that way. We will continue doing that. Our API index, you just heard from Mr. Geary about our current level. We've grown every year. We have a lot of work to do, but we have shown improvement every year that the schools existed. We're currently 629, but we have a long, a long way to go still. Yesterday, we got our first acceptance letter received by one of our seniors from UC Riverside. We're real excited for him. We're looking forward to more of those letters, but it was a big, big celebration, big deal for our students. We recognize that we have a long ways to go. The plan for these actions to move forward, especially in math and language arts, is detailed in the, in the materials that we provided to the charter office. Regarding finance, we use ExEd that I think a lot of you are familiar with. They help us tremendously with our current budget of 1.3 million. We have 257,000 in reserves, 116 of that, 116,000 was just from last year. So fiscally, we are a sound organization. We're in good shape there. On behalf of all of our staff, our parents, our board, our students, we, I just want to thank all of you and district leadership for the Prop 39 facility that we have. It's just made a significant impact on all of us, and we just really appreciate that support. Thank you for your time tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public testimony unless there is board member comments for --
Yeah, maybe Mr. Thurman, before you walk out the door, if I could just ask you a couple of questions. Thanks. Thank you. Sorry to catch you in your way. So could you talk to us a little bit, because we do have the issue of the one API, so could you talk to us a little bit about what are some of the strategies that have been producing growth over the last few years, and what are your strategies in place to get you, get you moving up?
Right. Yeah, we've, because of our small size and ability to have a somewhat flexible schedule, we've experimented with lots of master schedule plans. We've had tutorials that were in place on Tuesdays and Thursdays, core instruction Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We did that last year. When students were absent, we, attendance has been an issue at our school. We've been at 83% ADA until the middle of last year. We were able to get it up to 88%, and this year we're at 90%. So now with increased attendance, let me back up. When attendance was an issue last year, if someone missed one day, they would miss 30% of instruction in the core classes. We decided this year to have a, more of a traditional master schedule, but with small class sizes. 24 is our largest class size. Teachers are incorporating small group instruction, differentiated instruction. I know those are kind of buzzwords, but if you're in the classrooms and you see teachers with small groups after school, seeing teachers with the after-school tutoring, it's making a significant difference this year. Just having real classrooms this year has made a huge difference. Some of our, we had math and special ed departments out this, this week, or I think it was Friday, for some training on co-teaching. We fully implemented the co-teaching model this year with our special education students. We're seeing really good results so far, especially in math, which was our lowest area and of greatest concern this year. But across the board, being really able to intensify instruction each day is making a huge difference. From the first week, we noticed a difference from, from what's going on in the past. I could go into a lot of detail.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Thurman.
Any other questions? Thanks.
I just have a little comment. Most people in academics would look at an API of 629 and, you know, not be very, think that you're doing a good job, but I think when you look over the long term of where you started and where you are now, especially the 23-point API growth last year, I think you're obviously headed in the right direction, and I just want to encourage you and everybody at your school to not give up and to keep going, because if you continue on the trajectory you're on, there's only good things for those kids.
Right, right, and I just might add, in regards to our 629, we celebrate when we see our API, because we know where our kids were at when they came.
Right.
So we're making a lot of growth in the classrooms, but to get them out of that below basic is just hard. But we were, we made AYP this year because of safe harbor, which meant we were moving students, so that's really important to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, that will conclude the public hearing, and now we will go to the public hearing to consider renewal charter petition for Albert Einstein Academy Charter School.
Again, this is another public hearing. There's no action required at this time. Albert Einstein Academy currently has an API score of 875, so it did not have a growth target. It was previously at 881, so it's, again, it's above the 800 threshold, and they have met the requirement, the eligibility requirements for renewal. They're also a statewide DESILE ranking nine school and a similar school rank of six, so they are, they are eligible for renewal.
Thank you. Okay, for the public hearing, we have, you can come forward and then speak in any order, Jeanette Vaughn, Audrey Goud, Gustavo Vazquez, and Stasha Morse.
Good evening, Superintendent Koba and members of the Board of Education. My name is Jeanette Vaughn, and I'm the principal of Albert Einstein Academies. I've been the principal there for six years, and I'm extremely proud of our community and some of the accomplishments. A few things that I'd like to highlight is our strong academic performance, as Moise Saez just pointed out, that our API has held steady over 850 for the past six years. We are a dual-language immersion program in German. Students in our fifth grade actually take a German language diploma exam, which is part of the European Framework of Languages. It's a 50/50 dual-language model, so the students have half their instruction in German and half in English, which Audrey, I think, will tell you about in just a minute. But this level, this diploma exam gives us a level of comparison for language proficiency with other foreign language schools worldwide. We are authorized International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program, an IB program. We were actually the first elementary school in San Diego County to receive that distinction, and we're very proud of that, and there's been a few others, and some of the district schools now have that honor as well. And we continue to uphold the rigorous expectations of that program and the international-mindedness that comes with an IB school. We're right now doing a South African project with a school outside of Johannesburg that we're really excited about that partnership. We have been able to increase our student support programs through a newly created learning center. We have over 100 students every week that receive support in reading, math, and language instruction, and as well as social-emotional needs. We have a full-time psychologist. We have a full-time ed specialist and some classroom aides that help out as well. We have, like Co-op was just mentioning, we have a high degree of parent volunteerism, both in the classroom support and in fundraising. Our parent organization raises well over $100,000 a year, pays for art teacher, music teacher, field trips, assemblies, all those things that there's not room for in a budget these days, and we're really appreciative of that. We have a very committed Board of Trustees and stable leadership. We've all been around a while, and we're on strong financial footing, and our organization is poised for growth. In closing, I'd like to convey our appreciation for the collegial and productive working relationship we have with the district charter office. We look forward to another five years of serving the students of San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Audrey Goud. I'm in fourth grade, and at Albert Einstein, all of the teachers are nice. They never yell at you. They, and the IB, it's very fun, and I always learn something new. The German, every week we switch classes. It's always a bit of a rush at the end of the day, but both my teachers are nice. The IB is very, oh, wait, did I already say that? Anyway, it's very, yeah, I already did say that. But the German, it's challenging, but it's fun, and I learn something new every day.
Great. Thank you very much, Audrey.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Koba. My name is Gustavo Vazquez. I am a parent of a fourth-grade student at Albert Einstein. I'm also, I also serve in, as a member of the school side council. I am an educator as well. I, not at the school, I work in Loma Grande right now. And I am proud to say that my son is, is trilingual, and he's only 10 years old, but he wasn't all an accident, you know? It was, part of it was by design. When, obviously, my son's first language is Spanish, and I noticed in preschool that he was, when we put him in for a half a year, he was learning English very quickly. So we kind of went on a quest, trying to find a way to introduce him to a third language. So as you know, it is documented that brain malleability takes place in the early years of a child's education, usually around, you know, by eight. So we looked for a school that will continue to develop his English skills, as well as allow his acquisition of a third language. I looked around the county for 50/50 dual-language models, schools, and it was evident that most of them were like Spanish, English type of schools, and then Albert Einstein was, was able to provide us with that opportunity. Obviously, I was looking more for, for more than an enrichment program. I wanted an immersion opportunity for, for my son. It is rare to find a child born in Southern California that can communicate in three languages at the age of 10. This is the kind of opportunity that children growing up in places like Switzerland or Belgium might have. I'd be ungrateful to the Albert Einstein Academy and anybody who was, who put a little piece to make this, you know, dream of a school come through. Along with that, they also support the whole child, like after-school programs. My child currently participates, he has had the opportunity to participate in drama, med science, chess, sports clinics, and currently he's a member of the fusion team, and he will be participating in Legoland this Saturday. So I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity, and it has been an incredible, incredible opportunity for my child to be a, be trilingual.
Thank you.
Albert Einstein Academy Charter School has been a part of my life for nine years. My daughter Marley-- My daughter Marley started there in kindergarten when there was about seventy-three students, and we were housed in a church. This year she'll be graduating from eighth grade from Albert Einstein, the middle school part. And currently, I have a third grader and a fourth grader attending there. For years, my neighbors have thought it was crazy that I would drive twenty, sometimes thirty or forty minutes, when we have a perfectly good neighborhood school, but it's not Einstein. My children can speak and write in two languages. They know about cultures other than their own. They have raised money in supportive AEA service projects, Safe Passage, an organization that services families, children living in Guatemala City. My children have walked through with Einstein, carrying water to raise awareness that some people walk miles just to get a drink. They have learned that there is more than one way to do every math problem, that there's more than one word for everything, and that there is always more than one point of view. Part of Einstein's IB program is that it's inquiry-based, meaning that a big part of student learning is through questioning. In short, the immersion model that's rigorousness and the language has helped my children see that there is more than one solution to every problem and more than one side. As our world becomes smaller, I truly believe in Einstein's mission, teaching our children today to advance our shared community tomorrow. Yes, we're about immersion, and yes, we're about IB, but we're about community. Our parents raise money. They do school gardens. They come in on weekends. They beautify our school. Parents are getting together to put science in a box to help our teachers. And in fact, I don't just say this as a parent. Two years ago, I put my passion into action, and I became a teacher, fifth-grade teacher at Einstein. As a parent, I see how Einstein benefits my children. As a teacher, I see it benefiting and impacting hundreds of children. I cannot imagine working any other place. I am surrounded and supported by people who truly inspire me every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member comments?
I just want to say, I mean, it's exciting to hear some of the things you're doing at Einstein, which are very much in sync with what we're trying to accomplish and standing unified overall, particularly the introduction to multiple-world languages, and also the emphasis on critical thinking. So, congratulations on the great job you're doing.
Okay, we will move on to public hearing to consider a new charter petition for Village Academy of Cognitive Development.
Board, again, this is another public hearing. This one is for a new charter petition. Petitioners are petitioning to establish an elementary school program, K through five, serving approximate student body beginning with a hundred and then growing eventually to serve the full grade continuum of to three-hundred-and-fifty students. And they indicate they would like to locate in the southeast section of town. In addition, we're also going to be carrying out a capacity, a capacity interview that the principal advisory group will help us conduct. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the first public hearing for a new charter petition. We have a few public speakers. Ajare Morris, Kangali, Ed Soriano, and La Vergia Wright. You can speak in any order, and you each have two minutes to speak.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Board President, Superintendent, Board members, and district staff. I am Ajare Morris, lead petitioner of Village Academy of Cognitive Development. The founding members of Village Academy of Cognitive Development strongly believe that all students can achieve rigorous academic standards and are entitled to a comprehensive education. Our founding group is comprised of dedicated professionals in the areas of education, athletics, community psychology, and business. Our school will be open to any student. However, we will primarily target underserved students in District E. Our aim is to provide a viable learning option tailored to meet the needs of District E students. According to research, seventy-three percent of students in District E are from low-income families. There is a link between low-income students and low general academic performance. Currently, the majority of elementary schools in District E are not meeting the API target of eight-hundred. Excuse me. As a graduate of Lincoln Preparatory High School, I have a unique perspective on the needs of District E students. While at Lincoln, I witnessed students that were merely tolerated and those that were celebrated. The difference in a student that is tolerated and one that is celebrated can mean the difference between success and failure. Student success is vital in this climate of global interdependence between economic systems. The success or failure of District E students ultimately impacts the relative success of our great nation. Our students must be able to compete academically on a global scale. As a graduate of Vanderbilt University, I have learned what systemic school models are best suited to meet the needs of District E students. Our instructional approaches will include differentiated instruction, project-based learning, extended school days, and smaller class sizes. So, how do we succeed in this climate of fiscal uncertainty? What ensures our charter's viability? In order to avoid the pitfalls others have succumbed to, we have assembled qualified board members. We have retained Attorney Greg Moser to advise and train our board members on legal compliance matters. We have recruited experienced teachers that are familiar with the unique challenges of District E students. We have partnered with the Charter School Management Corporation. They will provide us with compliance and business support services. We have walked hand-in-hand with the California Charter School Association throughout our journey. They have provided us with support and resources.
Thank you. Can you just wrap it up?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Our commitment to our mission and our unwavering determination will ensure that we will provide District E students with the academic tools and nurturing environment necessary to raise the academic level of achievement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent, President, Board members, and district staff. I am Kianga Lee Curtis, board member of Village Academy of Cognitive Development. I am a graduate of San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts. I currently hold a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's degree in community psychology, and I'm one course away from completing my multiple-subject K-through-eight credential and master's in cross-cultural education. I say these things not only to describe my educational attributes, but to emphasize the importance of education within my life. As a board member of Village Academy, I have one singular goal. That goal is to ensure that District E students are well-educated and prepared to become productive citizens of our community. The Village Academy of Cognitive Development is a well-needed necessity within my community. This is due to the fact that my community continues to struggle with producing high academic achievers. In an era where families are unable to make ends meet, education has taken the backseat. Students are struggling to achieve the basic tools necessary for academic progress. Families have little to no time to help support the efforts of what is being taught within the classroom. So, what does this mean for our petition? We, the members of Village Academy, have designed a program that facilitates growth and promises advancement for the children within our community. We have smaller class sizes. We have discussed a longer school year. We have also discussed a longer school day. We plan to have teacher workshops throughout the year that will also incorporate additional...
You can wrap it up.
Again, we hope that you will look through all of our paperwork, as well as really analyze what is being spoken today, and make a firm decision regarding the opening of this school. Thank you.
Okay, and board members will have a chance to ask questions in a minute, too.
Yes.
So, go ahead. Next person.
My name is Virgie Wright. I am a retired elementary school teacher who worked in the district for twenty-five years at San Diego City Schools. I am also the grandparent of eight elementary-school-age children who all attend San Diego City Schools. I also volunteer in their classrooms. By virtue of the fact that I volunteer and is retired from the school system, I recognize the need for smaller class sizes and more individualized and innovative instructions. I feel that the founders of Village Academy for Cognitive Development are well-prepared and equipped to meet the needs of the children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Koba, President Evans, and members of the Board. My name is Edward Soriano. I work for Charter School Management Corporation. I've been working with Azuri Smith for the past several months in developing the budget and the business plan for a successful launch for Village Academy Cognitive Development. It's important that they have the right team put together, and Charter School Management Corporation can provide the back-office business services for Village Academy Charter School. I have served on Ken Chavez as a business manager at Darnell Charter School and at several of the charter schools up and down San Diego County and in Southern California. So, I just wanted to let the Board know that they have a strong back-office business service provider backing them up to help them on the business side of the house. As we all know, that charter schools are really successful on the education side, and where they may find some deficiencies on the business side of the organization. So, Charter School Management Corporation has been assisting the charter school with the development of the business plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments or questions? One question. What are you looking at in terms of, I know the area you're in, have you looked at a particular location at this point?
We're actually working with Insight Charter School Services to help us locate a facility. We're working currently with three different facilities on negotiating pricing and making sure they have the proper zoning CUPs, et cetera.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, this is the first hearing, so the staff will research the information provided, and they will give us the feedback, and then we'll have a follow-up meeting where we will be voting on the charter petition.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. It's information regarding the status of Harriet Tubman Village Charter School. So, this is an informational report. Moises.
Good evening, board members and superintendent. Last year was somewhat tumultuous at Harriet Tubman, and our office was involved with extensive oversight. This is an information item to provide the Board with the current status of the charter school. On April thirteenth of last year, 2011, the district issued a notice to remedy as a preliminary step in a revocation process. Consequently, on June seventh of 2011, the Board of Education approved an MOU agreement, which established conditions to continue the remedy period through the end of December of 2011. It gave Tubman additional time to remedy the violations that were found at that time. Over the past few months, district staff has monitored Tubman's efforts, which included pretty extensive document review, a visit to the charter school, and interviews with the principal, teachers, and board members of Tubman. At this time, district staff will continue its oversight and monitoring of Tubman, but overall, Tubman has demonstrated compliance with that agreement. And at this point in time, there is no need to pursue further revocation action. So, we wanted to share this in a public setting so that you would hear firsthand, if you will, of the progress that was made in this particular case, as the school worked with us to ensure that compliance was in place, and they addressed the issues that were identified in the past. Thank you.
Okay, we have, first of all, public speakers on this item. Bill Freeman, Rachel Varga, and Paul Liebman.
Distinguished Board and members, my name is Paul Liebman III. I am Vice President of the Board of Governance at Harriet Tubman Village Charter School. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Moses Aguirre and Susan Parks for their professional approach and demeanor in regards to this investigation and their findings, as well as to Scott Barnett for visiting onsite at our school and his willingness for his support. We are a better school due to the process and much stronger. We would like to also point out that because now that we are a 501(c)(3), which we thank you for approving that, we have a counselor onsite thirty hours per week. We have instructional aides in every classroom. We have new math textbooks for K-through-eight. There are middle school electives. We also have a hundred-and-eighty-day school year for the kids. We have winter, spring, and summer intersession as well, and our lowered middle school class size is twenty. Other things that we have to celebrate as well is our API is seven-ninety-four, which is plus-seven. Our ADA is two-hundred-and-eighty-six, which is plus-fourteen, and we were just recognized recently as the College Area Business District Honorable Mention Award for our school. Again, we would like to say thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bill Freeman, President of San Diego Education Association. My address is on file. I am proud to stand here tonight with the SDA members from Harriet Tubman Village Charter to say that, on behalf of SDA, we are pleased with the progress being made at the school to include parents' and teachers' voices and decisions affecting students. Your charter office did an outstanding job investigating the issues raised by the parents and teachers last year, and the results speak for themselves. Last year's unfair labor practice charges have been settled, and the recently ratified contract at Tubman has already happened to ensure stability and a positive work environment for Tubman's teachers. We look forward to working in a productive way with Tubman Charter School. In short, your accountability process worked. As SDA members continue to work with educators at union and non-union charter schools, we continue to be impressed at the great work being done in the many area charters to educate San Diego's children. We also continue to uncover great struggles as parents and teachers work to improve conditions in their schools. SDA will continue to advocate, just as we do for district schools, for a positive environment in all San Diego's classrooms. As custodian for all San Diego schools, charters, and districts, we hope this Board will work with the charter office to ensure a quality education for every child through strong charter oversight and a focus on listening to the voices of parents and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rachel Varga. I'm the fourth-grade teacher at Tubman Village Charter School. We are some of the teachers that appeared in front of you last year out of concern for where our school was headed. And we're here again, and in kind of the opposite sentiment. We are very pleased with where our school is headed. We've seen some great improvement. We have negotiated a contract, and the teachers are very happy with the results of that. So, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the teachers and say thank you very much for really helping to hold our school accountable. Thank you to the charter office. I really think that it's helped our school move in a positive direction, and I am just very proud to be a teacher at Tubman School. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any board member comments or questions? Yes, Mr.?
I'd just like to thank the teachers for having the courage last year to step up and point out the need for an accountability process. And I'd like to thank the board member on behalf of the administration for working cooperatively with the district to make this a better school and a better community.
Yes, and I'd like to echo that sentiment, and on all sides, in terms of the teachers who are organizing, the people and parents who are at the school... who are organizing, the people and parents who are at the school, and the charter office and district staff for all working closely together to come to resolution to some of those problems. Okay?
Yeah, ditto.
Okay. We will now move to the next item, which is policy recommendations from the Charter School Ad-Hoc Committee.
Moises will speak on this, President Evans. And this is a follow-up to the previous update that he had provided to the board, and there were a number of follow-up actions that had to be addressed. So I think that, let's go with the status report now.
Right. Members of the board and superintendent, this is an action item. We probably left it till the end. This follows the board's first reading on January 10th. The revised version is presented to the board based on comments that were received at that January meeting. The revised version represents the efforts of the Charter Ad Hocs Committee's efforts to develop a policy that outlines the role of the Charter Advisory Group. The three main purposes of this advisory group, as recommended, are, first, to conduct capacity interviews with new charter petitioners, two, to review complaints from charter schools under specific circumstances, and three, to review and update charter procedures and policies as, from time to time, as issues may arise that request or call for an update of district policy regarding charter schools. So that, we're here for questions.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt these policy recommendations, as we've already had a first reading?
Move approval.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have a quick question. On here, the third bullet point is ongoing review of charter policies. One of those things that I'm kind of wondering about is, a lot of times when charters come up for renewal, sometimes we see that their academic performance has gone down year after year after year after year, and it's only at that renewal process every five years that we're allowed to hold them accountable for their academic performance. And I was wondering, is there any annual review process at all for schools that are going in the wrong direction to try to notice the boards or try to do something to reverse that trend so that those children are in a better learning environment, or any kind of supports that we can provide the charter schools that are, you know, going in the wrong direction?
That is a very good question, and the short answer is, every year, the district staff does visit each charter school, and we basically review three main components. First and foremost is the academic program. We also review governance and operations and finances. So it's at that time where we have real candid conversations about where their performance is either strong or weak, and if it's on the weak side, we do remind charter schools that there's a specific threshold that has to be met in order to be eligible for renewal at the end of that charter term. And that threshold is basically on education code, that, again, that's where charter schools need to be in order to be eligible to be renewed.
But there are exceptions to the decile four ranking, right? There's one-year growth in API and other things. So, you know, I'm just concerned that, you know, we have some schools that are doing a great job, they're heading in the right direction, but I'm also concerned that there are some charter schools that might be in decile four, but yet their API has dropped three out of the last three years, and I'm very concerned that there's not a sense of urgency. I mean, I would hope all schools would have a sense of urgency if they noticed that their levels of student learning are going down year after year after year after year. I would hope that, you know, with the district schools, I know Nellie would react quickly to try to identify opportunities, changes, you know, try to help those children. And so I'm wondering, is there any kind of accountability system in San Diego Unified for the charter schools we are responsible for?
Well, when it comes to the academic process, there's really different types of charter schools. You have the large CMO charter management organizations. Those probably have more resources available to them, and they can look into new professional development or different type of interventions in terms of resources. For those schools that may be smaller in nature or scale, one of the things we're talking about in a different circumstance in this policy is the peer-to-peer, kind of almost like a coaching model, but it really is, the way it was considered was for when there's complaint or concern, but perhaps moving forward as we work towards a more comprehensive policy, we can, this is an area where we can talk about and further develop in terms of what types of peer-to-peer opportunities are for when academics are at issue. That's something we can definitely broach.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Barr.
Moises, you know, it's interesting, last year, we had two, you know, situations come up with Promise Charter School, on the one hand, and Tubman, where we had to, you know, initiate an investigation and go through a process largely around governance issues and the relationships between stakeholders and the school community. And I know that a lot of the thought and a lot of the work of the task force has been looking at, how do we, when a school gets into a situation like that, how do we help guide the school towards the kind of outcome that we've seen tonight with Tubman rather than the outcome that we saw with Promise? I wonder if you or any of the members of the task force could talk a little bit about how the process that you've put together can help achieve the positive results and avoid the sort of catastrophes.
Sure, and I can give my perspective, and I know there's a couple of members here from the ad hoc committee, so if they want to add their part, I think it'd be welcome. Basically, what we try to do is create a series of new interventions that basically what it would do is, before you get to a place where you'd get into a revocation procedure, what would basically would, what we would offer as a supporter, additional intervention, again, would be to participate in a peer-to-peer kind of coaching, kind of, some of the more established charter schools that perhaps have more experience with some of the issues and problems that arise from time to time, they could go in and coach some of the newer charter, or maybe a new charter leader at an established charter. So again, that's one of the things we're trying to build into the system, is the opportunity for different levels of kind of intervention, if you will. Ultimately, it's optional because we have to go by the requirements under education code, but it is something that we're offering kind of as an alternative kind of plan B before you get into this very formal letter-writing process where it's very legalistic and very administrative in nature. So that's what we try to do, is basically kind of, having gone through that experience, which was a difficult experience, and learning some of the things that did work in that case, is offering the opportunity for a peer-to-peer model. If that doesn't work, or there's an opt-out, then kind of the last exit before revocation, if you will, is reconstitution of the board in a way that both parties can agree to, the charter school and the district as well, because again, that piece is voluntary in nature, but we're establishing some real clear pathways, if you will, towards moving, to achieve some of these positive results without having to get to the ultimate option, which really is, at the end of the day, is revocation.
I would just like to add that with your help, Mr. Barrera, you've been very supportive, all of you have, not only are we working at trying to diffuse issues and problems solve, we're trying to improve our situation at every point. So we've put a lot of thought and are continuing to develop policy as it relates to the approval of charters. And so we've introduced this idea of a capacity interview. It's very important to us to be sure that the people who are presenting a petition actually understand what's in the petition, understand the ramifications, understand what it takes to operationalize a charter, understand some of the pitfalls. And we think that if we can work at every point, particularly at the beginning, and if we can help advise, and we realize we're only in an advisory capacity, advise the charter development office, who advises you, if we think that there's an issue, we bring that forward. If we think that there's a strong petition, we'd also recommend that there's some real possibilities for success. Within time, we hope that we won't have those kinds of issues down the line, because we've been very careful about the charters we've approved, and we've helped support them in every way. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and it does require a tremendous amount of commitment from leaders in the charter community to participate in the process. Do we anticipate that the, that the peer review process can be put into place for the new petition for the Village Academy?
We actually, without having formally approved it, we kind of piloted already with another petition that's come through, so, you know, it was, it was what I would qualify as a positive experience, hopefully on both sides. It definitely helped us as we formulate our recommendation to the board. It's, if you think about it as an analogy, perhaps, anybody who's applying for a job has to go through an interview, so it really didn't make sense not to have this component, and it's been, it's been helpful in instructing our, guiding us as we make recommendations to the board.
Yeah, that's great. Great work, as always, by Moises and Susan as well, so just like to thank you both.
Right, and I really appreciate the explanation about the capacity interviews. I know when we sit here on the board and look at new charter petitions and people hire people to help them prepare the petition so that they're properly filled out, which is, we can't tell if that's connected or not in terms of their own understanding and preparation as opposed to simply a well-worded document. So that's a really important step that you've added in. Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt this policy. Please vote. Okay, that passes 4-0, and Mr. Barnett, who is not here, also worked a lot on this issue too, so thank him for that. Okay, we'll now move forward to operational matters for the board. First of all, a motion to excuse previous board member absences.
Second.
Okay, please vote. And board members will receive CDs with the meetings.
That's right, yeah, the new policies.
DVDs, I should say, for their review.
That's right.
And they have a short test on what happened at the meeting. Okay, and now we'll go to D3, which is board member request to modify the bylaws, being brought forward by Ms. Jackson and Mr. Beiser.
Yes, sir, it's want to modify the bylaws so that we're not able to allow one board member to add something to the agenda, and it should be submitted within the guidelines of our timeline that we have set with the agenda planning, with the officer agenda planning. I just want to add that to there.
I second the motion.
Right, so just based on, for a thorough explanation of the issue, we've had previously changed it to having two board members put, be required to put an item on the agenda. This motion is stating we'll have one board member put an item, that only one is required to put on the agenda, but it needs to be submitted in a timely manner, which according to our current calendar is by, before, actually, Thursday of, basically a week and a half before the next board meeting. And the idea would be that if it's submitted after that date, it would go on to the next agenda. I would ask the board to consider an additional part to that motion would be, in that one-week time period in between, if there are two board members who feel it is important for the upcoming agenda, that that could be, that it could be added on to the agenda.
I could agree with that if it was like a first reading, so that we would all have the time to do our due diligence before having to vote on an important issue.
Well, and we did discuss that this morning in our board workshop, and so we should vote on it formally the next time, but that would be, we have clear what the motion is, and so is there any further discussion about that, Ms.?
Well, so I just, I just want to clarify, the, this motion includes the concept that if one board member wants to place something on the agenda, and there's not a second board member to support that item, that that item would automatically go on the agenda as a first reading? And that then, in the discussion, when the item comes on the agenda, that would include a decision by the majority of the board whether or not to direct staff to do an analysis of the agenda item? And I think that that's important. I'm of two minds of this issue. All five of us are elected, you know, by the public, and we've got our responsibilities as representatives in a democracy to bring issues that are important in the community, you know, here to the board. However, we made a change in this policy for a reason, and that's because the purpose of bringing items to this board meeting is to take those items seriously, and if a board member believes strongly enough in an issue and wants to bring the item forward, I think they need to do their work to reach out to at least a second board member and see that there's some possibility that the majority of the board would support, would support the motion. I do worry about board members using the agenda of the, of our public meetings simply to raise issues, to, you know, I'll be frank, to grandstand. I think there's plenty of opportunity for board members if they want to raise awareness of issues, to do it, and we've seen board members do press conferences, we've seen board members use other means to raise awareness of issues. When an issue comes to this body, I think it needs to be taken seriously and be considered seriously. So I understand, though, that we don't want to get in the way of the rights of an elected board member to bring items forward. But the reason that I think this issue is important is, the staff is incredibly pressed for time, and I think that in order for the staff to take, put the kind of time and effort into doing the analysis that's required often, you know, for the full board to consider whether an issue makes sense, should require a majority of the board to direct the staff to do that, and we can't just have the staff subject to, every time an individual board member wants analysis of something done, to just kind of, you know, direct that to happen. So I'm of two minds, I'm willing to support the item provided that there's the, it's understood that if a board member does not have the support of at least one other board member in putting something on the agenda, then it goes on the agenda as a first reading without staff analysis, and then the board, the full board will decide whether to move forward with staff analysis.
Right. Is that clear? Ms. Jackson?
That's very clear, but I think, and certainly as we move forward, not just with this particular item, I think the conversation around things coming from the board should always be a first read, whether it's two, it's one or two people, because again, staff needs to do is due diligence, and I don't think even two should go to the staff and ask them to research something until the entire board has said it's a priority for them. So I think that, again, my recommendation in the past has been that when we bring something to the board, it should be a first read. The person bringing it forward should have done their homework to put it on the agenda. That does not require them doing, having the staff do any work until the board majority has said that they want it to go forward. Yes, thank you for your consideration of this item, everyone.
Okay. Mr. Shank?
Since I'm the one asked to write this, I have a couple of questions and one comment. I made an attempt, I'm losing my voice too, I made an attempt to make some of the amendments that we talked about this morning. I realized as we go along here, I haven't captured everything. My suggestion would be is I will try and scrivener some language that we've talked about along these lines, and bring it back to you the next board meeting, and I'll share it with you in the meantime.
So is this a first reading?
It's a first reading, FEA.
Well, it's just, I mean, you could certainly say that, you know, pending final language, you have the rules of, John and Scott will have to figure out what the rule is when an agenda item comes up until we pass the bylaw.
Next meeting.
But you can certainly do that, but until it's in writing, you know, a lot of times, as we lawyers say, it didn't happen unless it was in writing, so. My only concern about any particular action today is that we, in the interim, before we actually have the words, that people understand what we're going to do.
So let me get this straight, so I'm...
Should we vote so that he can then be, know the direction of the board to do the work? Isn't that Mr. Barrera's concern?
I think, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I think we, I think we have enough clarity on the motion to vote on it tonight, so let me take a stab at it. The motion is to allow an agenda item to come forward if it's proposed by a single board member, provided that that item appears as a first reading. And then the process for that item coming forward on the agenda will follow the process of the, of the... of the, of the board officers, which we've, which we've discussed at length, which is, you know, we need to get the agenda item before the board officers, before their meeting, you know, to plan the agenda. And in the case that it comes after that, the board officers will work to get it on the agenda, but will attempt to put it on one of the next two meetings. Do you want to?
Let me read what has been written, so that everybody is very clear.
All right.
It says, "Members of the Board of Education who desire to introduce an item for immediate action at a public board meeting at which that item is first considered should file such an item for the conclusion to the agenda of the board action officer by noon a Thursday, 12 days preceding the regular board meeting. When a board meeting are held on days other than Tuesday, special arrangements for inclusion on the agenda for the board member, immediate action items should be made by the board action officer." What was taken out, was lined out so the public understands is that the item will not be included unless one of the other board members incur with this request. So what is, all we're doing is, we're taking out some things that said you would have to have an additional person. When it comes down, so I don't, I don't want to make it sound like we got to go back and do all of this writing. We just passed our bylaws less than a month ago. All we're doing is we're going back through the bylaws and we're taking out sentences that say that it must be two board members. That's all we're doing. And then, and I think the conversation around when, even in our bylaws, is this what I was referring to this morning, it says, "Meetings of the agenda planning shall be held," no, listen, "eight days prior to the board meeting." And so all we were confirming was that if someone wants to put something on the agenda, they have to have it to the agenda planning, eight days. They can't come 32 hours before the meeting and put it on the agenda. That's what I was trying to clarify when I was doing my initial motion. But all we're doing this evening, so no offense, you know, general counsel, I don't think we have to go back and rewrite this thing all over again. I think what you've done here by lining out already is what the motion essentially is, is that one person can add something to the agenda. I just further clarified it by saying that person has to have that item to the agenda planning committee. They can't come within the last 32 hours and put it on.
Right.
I am not certain, Member Jackson, whether simply going back to the original version from three or four months ago is actually capturing what you all have been talking about.
Okay.
It could very well be, but I just, well...
Right, there's the basic issue, which is, does it require two members versus one member to put an item on the agenda? And that's, that's clear.
Yeah, in the old version, that wasn't even there. We didn't even talk about two board members at all. So...
It says occurrence by at least one other board member. Occurrence by at least one other board member is required in order to place a matter on the agenda.
That was the change to the bylaws.
That is what we are lining out.
Understand that.
And so my, I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding, I think that we're making something much more than it really is. I think this was just a simple going back to what we were before, where one member could put something on the agenda with the clarification that they needed to do it by the agenda planning meeting. That was my understanding of all the conversations that we had today was that we didn't want anyone putting something on the agenda at the last meeting. And if they could get somebody to second, a second person, that would be great. But regardless, it would still be a first read. And my feeling about first reading is that anything that board members bring forth should always be a first reading because staff needs to have time to go back and do their due diligence. And many times, we may have ideas about things, but staff still needs time. So whatever we bring forth, we should not bring things forth in eight days and say it's going to be an action item, okay? And so, and so what I thought I was hearing was we were saying, we can vote on this, but since it's not in writing, it doesn't mean anything. And I'm going to say, there's a lot of things we vote on up here that are not necessarily in writing, and you're not saying it's not valid. It's valid, once we vote for it, that means that's what we're going to do. That's my understanding of us voting up here.
Okay, so the, the, it's clear about one board member versus two. And the other issue that we've been discussing today is being stricter with the deadlines in terms of getting things on the agenda.
So why don't we do this?
Paying more attention to that.
I'll put my motion back, if my second doesn't mind. I'll put my motion back, and I'll make a motion, just for today. The motion for right now is to allow one board member to be able to add something to the agenda as long as it is submitted by the agenda planning meeting as a first read. Okay?
Right.
Second?
Thank you. So can we pass that motion first, and then we can do all the other stuff?
Okay, and so just to clarify, because this isn't maybe exactly what Ms. Jackson is saying, but we have, so they would, it would be required for it to be a first reading. However, the language I've read at various places is that the, in general, the preference is it be a first reading as opposed to a requirement. So I'm, in my mind, making a little distinction here, that if there's one person, it's required to be a first reading. If it's two people, it's preferred that it be a first reading, but not a hard and fast rule, which...
What I'm just saying to one person, I'm just making this as one motion, and for one person, it's required. We can, I can discuss what you want to do with two people at the next, can we just do this?
Okay, so repeat your motion.
My motion is that one board member be allowed to add any, some, an item to the agenda as long as it is done prior, done by the agenda planning, which is eight days before.
Well, it's actually more than eight days, but just say prior to the agenda planning.
Prior to the agenda planning, and it is, it is listed as a first reading.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
And that's noon on Thursday.
It's actually a little inaccurate, because sometimes at the meeting, is it in the morning?
Once again, the more I read this and the more I know your practice, it deviates from these rules.
Yes.
Right.
So we need to kind of clean that up. But I understand what Member Jackson's trying to do, she's just trying to get her issue resolved, which is a good issue to resolve, but...
Prior to the board, the officers' agenda planning meeting.
Right.
I'll have to, the bylaw says noon, and you guys meet before noon on that day, so we're going to have to fix that.
That will be fixed, but the intent of hers is before the meeting.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Okay, so let's vote on that motion. Okay, that passes 4-0.
Now, if you want to talk about the other stuff, we can. Well, I guess we can, because I don't need to.
Yeah, let's not. Okay. Hmm. Well, if someone wants to make another motion, I think we, at this point, if we're making that one change, I think we can kind of observe how things are going for another month or so and see if there's any fine tuning that needs to be added to it.
I will try, and I will reflect on what she said. We're just going to eliminate the language concerning the concurrence. And I would have to change the one thing on the, getting the item to the board officers. Other than that...
Right. That's all you can change.
We can go with it, with that point.
Right.
Okay.
And I think one of the things that we've done in this conversation is clarifying that we're going to follow the practice that we have set up. Okay, that is, there is no other public testimony from the crowd here today. And since, since we have assessed ourselves this morning, I think we can forego the assessment tonight. So the meeting is adjourned.